...in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberated and just as it is now.
Mr. Basil, would you do the roll call for us?
Mr. Martino, would you like to lead?
Pardon?
I said it would be my pleasure.
Mr. Gray.
Uh, Mr. Basil, present. Mrs. Bites.
Here.
Mr. Doty.
Here.
Mr. Kurtz.
Here.
Mr. Rathke.
Here.
Mr. Speed.
Here.
Ms. Trodowski.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Mr. Martino.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Basil.
You're welcome.
Under announcements, uh, a couple things before we go into the recognition. Uh, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Doty on the birth of his little daughter.
Thank you.
And congratulate Mr. Miller on the birth of a son. If anybody else has had a child, just let me know, I'll announce it. A few things under announcements. Uh, two years ago, I was honored to be elected president of this school board. And last year, I was reelected, even I'm sure last year, which because nobody else wanted it. Uh, I'm told several people, I've told several people from the beginning, however, that I felt no one should be board president forever. So this will be my last meeting as board president. But this isn't about me, it's, it's the last meeting before our organization, so rather, I'd just like to mention a few things that have been accomplished by this board as a group over the past two years. And during that time, the Daniel Booth area school district has taken steps to expand curriculum, refinance bonds to reduce debt, and in fact, our credit rating has increased. We've controlled spending, we've ratified budgets both years without a tax increase, and perhaps most importantly, we've recruited endor promoteers and administrators, and we believe will continue making this an even better school district. There is one issue I'm not as happy about, however, and that's the upcoming loss of two board members, Larry Speed and Andrew Basil. I miss the directness and honesty conveyed by Mr. Speed, who's been diligent in supporting the improvement in curriculum, adamant about not spending money we don't need to spend, or raising school property taxes that we don't need to raise. And in addition to his committee participation, he served as the alternate board secretary. It's also a shame that the public never got to witness his drive since Puma and executive sessions. Larry, you're a big shooter to fill, and I'm sorry to see you go. As for Mr. Basil, this community's done itself a disservice by not reelecting him to the board. Eight years ago, he was elected to a board that spent money unnecessarily and signed contracts they couldn't afford, placing this district in the very deep debt and taxpayers under an ownerless tax burden. That board also lacked transparency as well as foresight. By serving as board president for several years and board secretary for the past two years, he personally led the way to all of that being changed, stopping the absurd spending, stopping the annual tax increases, and forcing the board into transparency. Of course, people who benefited from the excess of spending and unsustainable contracts presented what he accomplished and strove to replace them. I mark my words, in the not-too-distant future, this district, the public, realize the asset it lost. Andrew, I'll miss your knowledge, especially of finances, and perhaps even more, I'll miss your leadership. Larry and Andrew, I'd ask that you both continue to come to meetings as member of the public and speak out on the issues. With the codicil, of course, that Andrew would have to learn to complete a statement in three minutes or less.
That's impossible.
But thank you.
Thank you both. We have a little token for the two of you. They have asked to press to take the picture.
Hold your hand.
Yes, good sir.
Hold your hand.
Nothing here, wait, if you're gonna, you didn't accept the speech, I gotta start.
Put the light on.
This is for Mr. Speed, it's just a token of appreciation. Thank you, Larry. And the same vote for Mr. Basil, except, this one says, "Mr. Basil."
That's very kind of you guys. Actually, you may want to start the meeting, I just want to say something very quickly. Fortunately, it's a Thursday night, Monday night before Thanksgiving, and there aren't a lot of people here, and our administrative team isn't really here, but I do want to thank, uh, our administrative team, that includes their secretaries, our directors, our building principals, our business managers, and their superintendents that I've had the pleasure to work with over the years. And as one of nine board members, I'd like to thank the 20 following people who dedicated their time and effort as volunteers, and I had the honor to work with them as well. And they are Jo- uh, Joanne Hartzell, Mike LaShire, Margaret Facette, Alan Ross, Kevin McCullough, Grant Gagnon, Dick Finler, Walt Sheehan, Frank Semenaro, Monica Hamel, Rob McLaughlin, Susan Duncan, Data Rathkeb, Connor Kurtz, Carol Bites, Larry Speed, Rich Martino, Brian Doty, Tamar Trodowski, and Michael Wolf. Being on the board is a team effort, and credit belongs to those 20 people for working together to put this district on both a stronger academic and financially sound footing than it was eight years ago. As a result, I believe this district is now on a path of continuous and more importantly, sustainable improvement going forward. And I especially want to thank my wife and my children, they're not here, they're on vacation, but maybe they'll read the minutes one day. I want to thank them for their patience and generosity in giving up their husband and their dad for hundreds of nights and thousands of hours to allow me to sit in this seat instead of the audience at their performances, or on the sidelines of their games, or at the dinner table, or at their bedside at night, so I can serve our community. It's been a pleasure, it's been an honor, and I'm truly appreciative and humbled at having the opportunity and experience. So I want to thank you all. And as part of most school traditions, usually there's a little bit of celebration that goes on. When I was in school, we used to bring cupcakes. So in the back, there's about 48 cupcakes in both chocolate and vanilla. Please take them, eat them, uh, take them home with you if you want to, I see there's some kids in the audience tonight. Uh, I won't be taking them home, so if, if nobody does, share them with the staff tomorrow at the different high schools and, uh, the lease, please.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Martino, could I, can I take mine?
Sure.
I'd just like to thank both of you as well for your service. Uh, Mr. Speed, I haven't worked as long with you, but we, we had some good times, and I appreciate your absence at Puma probably, because I have one myself. Um, Andrew, um, I've known you six or seven years now, I remember when I first got on this board, there was a lot of 8-1, and then slowly 7-2, 6-3 votes. I was the swing vote and, uh, the, the object of some anger many times, um, with the old board, but I appreciated your direction and your willingness to, to go over the financial aspects of things that my brain doesn't really understand in spreadsheets that you can put together, so, um, I appreciate that. The building, when we had business, uh, managers who were, who were accountants, um, who were really just bookkeepers, and helped us to try to understand those things, so, thank you, and I'll miss both of you.
Yeah, Mr. Martino, may I say something? I started coming to these meetings now, when I was, I guess, in junior high school, maybe sophomore, which is so long ago now, and I remember sitting in the back of the old tour, and looking at my best friends from high school, and watching Mr. Basil up on that stage, and he was always just this clear and articulate voice of what made sense in, uh, in conversations that often ended up in the absurd and end loser to, to ring them back in. He really, uh, from coming to those meetings, just watching how he carried himself, and how, um, how he interacted with others, and really kept, if you want, focused on task, he's really been an inspiration to me in what he's done, what he's achieved, and, uh, I will miss both of you, and I want to thank you personally, Andrew, just for your leadership and what you taught me as a board member and as a person.
Hi, Basil, hello, Mr. Martino. Uh, hopefully, can I come, probably want to be more moderate, folks on the board, I hope this is as opposed sincerely to it. Uh, do want to thank both of you down there for getting on the board. Uh, and Mr. Basil, before I, I got on the board two years ago, looking from the outside, um, I mean, I agree on hardly anything with you, uh, we still, we still disagree a lot, but I think you are a, uh, a model for what a board member should be, as far as respect, as far as working with a board, not trying to be patronizing, I think, I think you, you so much to be a board member, you're a great model for that. And I also do believe you did, you have done some good things for this district, as far as the transparency, as far as getting some, uh, systems in place that people who are not on the board don't realize. So, uh, being these two years here, I, I appreciate what you've done, and I mean, we have sincerely.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Want to thank Mr. Speed, uh, member of my committee over the last year, you had a lot of good input, um, so I, I really appreciate you taking the time to, uh, read through the policies and come up with your suggestions, because after all, policy is very exciting, so there's like, it's a lot of, uh, motivation to, to do that on your spare time, but I do appreciate you for, for contributing, and I will miss your, uh, your colorful metaphors, which is, as swell leaves, cursed jar, for an executive session.
That's right. That's your envelope.
So, I do, do want to thank you for your, uh, for your, uh, service. Uh, Mr. Basil, I know when we first met, it was, uh, not our most pleasant circumstances, uh, came as a surprise to both of us, I was inhabited that day, um, but in all seriousness, when it came time for the orientation, um, you sat down with me, um, you were very, you know, transparent as far as, uh, making sure that it was explained to me, meet your expectations, you're going to give all the information that is available to any other board member. Um, you related your past experience, which, and I've recounted it several times in, in jazz, about the box, you know, that we talk to you, you know, but you were very welcoming, treating me with, you know, professionalism, and I do appreciate that. Uh, we're gonna have to continue on with some of the Basilisms of, you know, the event horizon, divinity, you know, all those words you would throw into us, expanding our vocabulary, so I do appreciate your service, and, uh, and, uh, I, I, most of all, I think it's worth noting that over the last several years, your financial, uh, knowledge has saved the district, um, a lot more money than it was ever attributed to you in coming, and I think that's something very noteworthy, and quite unachievable, because you saved a lot of money that can went back into programs, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
There's not a dry eye?
We'll do the group hug later.
Procedures, uh, agenda edits, I'm sorry, agenda edits, under item number 13, policy, there are first readings on C, D, E, F, G, H, and I, in addition to A and B, and it's all first readings on revised policies that the policy committee has been reviewing. Procedures for public participation are on the inside of the blue cover of the agenda, and they basically state that if you have a comment to make, you come to the podium, sign in, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to make your presentation. Are there any presentations by the public on the agenda items?
Mr. Martino, I just want to add, there's 15, uh, under new business, there's a question about safety drills. Should take me a second, but we've talked about it a couple times.
That's one more agenda edit, safety drills under item 15. Are there any other agenda edits? Saying none, we'll move on to student recognition for November, Mr. Harris.
Okay, the student recognitions for November are two Eagle Scouts, Troop 597, a Christopher Ellinger, and a Nicholas Horton. Please come, come on down. What was your project?
Um, I, um, my project was landscaping around the war memorial outside the municipal building.
My project, I built for the Camelback adaptive skiing program, uh, ski racks for their adaptive skis.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. One more item I should have mentioned under announcements, at 7:30, uh, this Pennsylvania State Senate was discussing and moving on a motion to approve the elimination of school property taxes. Where it is now, I don't know, but it was being discussed at 7:30. Consent agenda, is there a motion on item B?
Would you like to excuse the kids?
Second. Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mr. Speed on items A, A through Q. Any comments or questions? Saying none, Mr. Basil.
This will be an ad's vote for approval unless I hear votes in the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes.
Item nine, building and grounds, facilities, and Mr. Des.
Hey, Mr. Martino, uh, the facilities committee, they meet, uh, on Wednesday last week, and really, just kind of briefly went over, um, some kind of staffing positions that, um, I'm interviewing for, and we also talked about some equipment, the, um, the order trucks were later and, and, uh, a little behind schedule, so we'll have them as soon as possible, but in the meantime, I would like to, to spread my disposal of, um, the two older trucks, the third one, they will currently be keeping until, um, the new trucks come in, but the 82 GMC dump and the 88 Chevy truck are not in good use for condition, so, um, I was asked that we all approve disposing of those, so they get them off our asset list. And, uh, that's all I have at this time. We did not schedule a December, uh, meeting, but, uh, let me see what happens with the news.
Where would they be going, Mr. Des, through the process?
Um, normally, my understanding of Mr. Small is normally because they're in such , uh, poor condition, they have to rescrap, but, uh, he was going to list them on the website, or, I think, said he has, had a couple of people ask questions and cards for them, so they were just going to take them, say, I guess, on, on the website, see if they can get a little bit more of them yet for scrap, but, um, normally, we just, they just scrap them.
Thank you, Mr. Trodowski. Uh, financial approvals.
Can I make, can I make a motion to, uh, to authorize the disposal of those, please? If, if I'm allowed to, or not, so we can ask.
Motion by Mr. Trodowski to dispose of the two vehicles, there's a second, second by Mr. Rathkeb. Well, you said that was all, it looked like you weren't going to do it.
Well, usually, you call for the motion, so I was waiting.
Comments or questions on the disposal of the two vehicles? Saying none, Mr. Basil?
Should we do this as a consent? Save some time? This will be an ad's vote for approval unless I hear votes in the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes.
Item 10, finance, Mr. Basil?
So we did have a finance committee meeting, uh, for the board members that were not present, it was a joint finance facilities committee meeting. Uh, the draft audit was proposed at that time, I think the most significant piece of that, I don't know if you guys have your drafts, or, you want to go through your drafts, I won't spend a lot of time on it unless people have a lot of questions, but I think the most significant piece of it was this year, due to accounting rules, they were required to, uh, put on the books our net pension liability, which dramatically impacts the overall statement of net position for the school district. It's a $72 million liability. Um, they also documented in the audit this year, uh, I believe on page 66, uh, the Peasars liability pensions, uh, pension, uh, payments that we've been making over the years. I think it's interesting to note, and should be part of the discussion continually with the public, is the liability issue that this presents to the school district and the impact it has physically on our budget. Back in 2009, when we signed the, uh, the teacher's contract, our liability was $868,000 that year. This past year, it was $4.9 million. So our enrollments have declined, the number of teachers we have has declined, uh, and our pension liability has gone up by almost five or $4.1 million per year. Uh, so that is only going to go up higher next year, and eventually plateau, but it's going to be about $5 million a year going forward. So it's something of note, something the public should be aware of, it's something the board should be aware of, um, it's something that the, um, teachers union should be aware of when we're, uh, talking about a new contract. So, um, having said that, the only, only point I wanted to mention was, uh, the variance between our actual costs and budgeted costs was less than 1% of the total budget. So I think, uh, our hats go off to the, uh, business office and to the board for working very diligently on a, on a budget. It did take a long time, but we, we got about as close as you can get to spending the money that you've been budgeted for, so, uh, that was great work. Uh, let's see, what else can I tell you? We talked a little bit about, um, the preliminary budget as well. One of the things that came up, I think, was overall that we, there's probably a need to put some dollars aside as part of the operating budget for capital reserves. That dollar figure hasn't really been determined yet. Uh, we have a couple different pieces of information we're looking at, we have the reserve study that was done a couple of years ago that acts as a guideline, uh, I think the numbers in there are a little unrealistic, according to those numbers, we need to be putting about $2 million a year aside, which is impossible for us to do. Um, we have a list that Casey put together for us as well, and Jim Thompson is going to be looking at both of those, uh, as well as doing his own inspections of the buildings to make a determination as to exactly what it is we should be setting aside for these different buildings, so we have the money as available for the different building components as they come, uh, due for replacement. So, uh, those event horizons are in front of us, and, uh, we need to be aware of them and be saving for them, and putting those dollars aside, so that, uh, those things can be taken care of when the time comes.
Mr. Basil, word to administration, maybe, is there a big update on when Jim is going to be presenting?
I spoke to Jim last week, prior to the, uh, the meeting, he was putting his data together, he thought sometime in December. So, uh, he was asking me what dates we'd meet, told him when the reorganization meeting was, and that there was an opportunity to probably move it later in the month to, to make a presentation.
I know we were kind of hoping to avoid that with the holidays, but it is what it is.
You may pass to, yeah, I'll pass to him.
Yesterday, I spoke with Mr. Harris, and, and after we agreed to contact Mr. Thompson, and asked Mr. Hurley to contact him, Mr. Thompson hasn't gotten back to him yet, we were going to try and get him in here, um, at the agenda meeting tomorrow, but he hasn't gotten back, so we're still waiting for his back term. Other comments or questions for Mr. Basil? I, I would just like to make one comment, you, you touched on the preliminary budget. We thought the state budget was close to being decided, and now it seems like with a, this vote on property tax elimination, and members of both parties not being happy with the rise in sale tax or the lack of a distribution formula, I don't know that the budget's anywhere near being, close to being done at the state level. And what everybody needs to understand is, we're talking about working on, on the 16, 17 budget, and we don't have our money from the state for 15, 16 yet, so it, it's hard to make any forecasts. But, other comments or questions for Mr. Basil?
I need a motion, I need to, uh, for our.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rathkeb, second by Mr. Trodowski to approve the financial compliance report, the annual audit. Comments or questions? Saying none, Mr. Basil?
This will be another ad's vote for approval unless I hear votes in the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes.
Item 11, personnel approvals.
I need a motion for 11A, 1, 4.
Second. Motion by Mr. Dasky, second by Mr. Doty for 11A, 1 through 4. Comments or questions? Saying none, Mr. Basil?
This will be another ad's vote for approval unless I hear votes in the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes.
Item 12, curriculum, Mr. Kurtz.
Thank you, Mr. Martino, the curriculum, the committee event just prior to this meeting at 6 o'clock, uh, we discussed a variety of things, including, um, continuing with the textbooks, the textbook review process, potentially requiring, uh, curriculum writing in other school districts, uh, probably talk about literature classes in high school, telling the last minute, there was an issue of students being required to buy texts, um, literary black suits, and bringing supplies to the district moving forward. I don't forget something from Mr. Hurley, and if there are any questions, I'll direct them toward him, but we've offered an opportunity to partner with Rosemont College to install an aquarium at Daniel Booth High School, and the aquarium will be similar to the Grays in, in that it will be tied to an AP class, this would be environment and science, and the administration is proposing that we formally establish a club for after-school to maintain this aquarium, because it will require more work than, um, allocate for the class itself. Uh, I'd like you to look through the rest of what we discussed in the meeting, and if there are any specific questions about that, I'll write it to Mr. Hurley, who is now the resident district expert on all things coral reefs. Uh, we discussed an employee recognition program, and that's still, we're working on that, but we get something, um, that the administration is taking the lead, as well as discussing recognizing Daniel Booth High School alumni, parade, wall honor, the high school. Uh, we also have an update on average kindergarten, and the administration has been asking, coming back to committee with a recommendation on what to do, how much you will cost, what the challenges are, and how we will base those challenges and defeat them at the January meeting. Uh, finally, we discussed achieving this among non-native English speakers in Daniel Booth, more just a, a way to understand where we, where we stand right now in regards to the students and families that don't speak English as their primary language. Um, I just want to make sure, and I really want to make sure that those students, okay, that serve this same community. Uh, does anybody have any questions? Do you need one more recommendation? Well, Mr. Rathkeb?
Real quick, Mr. Kurtz, um, before you walk in, we did discuss a lot of items, like Sullivan, and, uh, Basil was here, and some of the other programs, facilities, uh, my, my question, uh, curriculum was that, you know, Mr. Norrie, A, C have requested this budget supply for computers, and, you know, so, uh, my question was, how's that tied to curriculum? So, administration was already involved with that, and we, we walked that back, um, and they're trying to address some science issues with, with some of these, uh, science kits that are available, that we can get, um, which is actually hands-on, and, as well as tying into online learning opportunities for NASA and other, other items. Uh, and as far as the computer issue goes, the, the elementary schools have, you know, kind of came together and agreed that really this is a area which is start at the high school and, and, and come back down, because obviously, the technology, just, in elementary school, kind of... Because obviously, the technology you start in elementary, how do they get to high school? Who knows where that will be? So we can start technology-wise in high school and kind of pare down, so that is what we had there.
Thank you, Mr. Rathkeb. In reverse, the aquarium, is there any discussion from the board?
Just like a live aquarium?
Yes.
Live living core?
Yeah, coral, fish, everything.
That's a lot of saltwater.
You know, Mr. Roth, do you have a do?
He's a boat owner.
Now, I had a saltwater tank for about 10 years, and that's a lot of work, especially for a.
Are you operating volunteer?
There's a reason why I don't have that.
There you go. Well, Mr. Roth, should we give you a few minute presentation on what this is and answer any questions?
Sure, no problem. First, the high school is proposing that they build a captive coral reef aquarium as part of their AP environmental science course. They are also proposing that they have a club. The reason why they would like to have a club is because the maintenance of the aquarium, as Mr. Wolf correctly pointed out, is well beyond the scope of the science course itself. The purpose of that is to supplement the AP environmental science course. One of the unique things about this is we're going to be partnering with Rosemont College. They are willing to provide a significant amount of equipment to us for free, and it's very expensive, as you're well aware, for saltwater, it's very expensive. And probably more importantly, they're willing to provide us with the expertise. One of the professors is insisted willing to come out to train our teachers and our students in the proper way to maintain the coral reef aquarium. So basically, Rosemont College is partnering with us, the way the large schools would partner with us, providing us with a substantial cost savings. From an academic standpoint, what it does for us is, we want kids, we want kids to do science, let us certainly read about science all the time, we want them to actually conduct experiments. They will actually be conducting experiments with the aquarium itself, comparing and contrasting with the actual college students who are doing their own experience, their own experiments with them, and they'll be writing papers and doing things like that. So some very high-level work's going to be done with the aquarium. What we would be looking at, there are some costs associated with this, which I can share with the committee itself. It would be approximately between $600 and $1,500 for the school to get involved in this. We have to pay for the animals in the aquarium itself, and the fish in the aquarium itself to start it off. I had reached out to the foundation in a preliminary sense, they're willing to donate that money, they have firmly bid that at this point in time. But again, we're getting a lot of equipment back from the college itself for free. On a year-to-year basis, what you'd be looking at is about a $600 commitments, which we would keep in our AP environmental science course. AP courses themselves, whether they're science-weighted, are going to have a lot of cost anyway. It would just be things that we would continually turn over year to year itself. Again, what we need from the board is a commitment, we can partner with Rosemont College, obviously other colleges, our other high schools want to do this. The other piece is we'd like to start a club to help maintain the aquarium, as we don't want to spend all of our class time just maintaining the simple parts of the aquarium itself. Does that help, Basil?
Thank you.
Do we maintain, like, just like this week, for instance, when the kids are not in school? That was my question over the summer. Would they?
They would be done in a similar way, the RE team does a lot of work in the summer. Mr. Harwood, and the club itself would be doing some work periodically during the summer meeting.
But Mr. Wolf's point was, like, over Christmas break, would it still be the students coming in on their time?
It would be, the students and the club advisor on their time to help out. It's certainly going to be the equipment on everyone's part in this work.
Where would the aquarium be placed?
The intended location for that is where the RE team has all their equipment for their other projects there, so it's a pretty secure location.
Where would that be placed? Be all in one house?
The one classroom.
But then, but then it wouldn't be visible to the student population, huh?
Is it going to be in the hallways now? It's not going to be in the hallways where it's at, because obviously, they'd be interacting, the AP class in particular would be interacting with it.
I'm Casey and Small, I didn't know. I guess for all, I mean, I forgot.
Were you offering, or?
No, I forgot they had, I assume they had a stipend for the club as well.
It's my understanding that Mr. Harwood is volunteering to this. We have a local.
Potentially, potentially down the road, if Mr. Harwood signs, he's not going to be the advisor.
That could potentially, that'd be a cost down the road, that's correct.
How many gallons is it?
Good question. I think it's, I know it's over 55, I just want that.
I did pose a question.
I do have a packet on behalf of the, most of the people around the curriculum meeting. It's pretty specific, it goes down item by item where the costs are, projected costs down the road are, just, it's pretty specific.
200 gallons, you have in that.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. But what is worth, I did ask the administration to put the aquarium in the cafeteria and maybe add some lobster, but I got a few more to ask the curriculum administration.
If they don't feed them, then they start feeding themselves, that's a problem.
Mr. Curtis, I can send this out to the whole board if you want.
We'll send Mrs. Gray.
Mrs. Gray will send out the whole, I think, the board. And I'd prefer to have a motion on the next agenda for the next meeting, approve or deny this.
Does that work, Mr. Hurley, wait until December 2nd, or do you need an answer sooner than that?
Rosemont has requested that it gets here as soon as possible. They are leaning on us a little bit, they haven't constructed live ones at this point in time. Again, if he can even just tenderly tell them we're very interested in what they're doing, the more information I can give Rosemont, the more likely they're going to be taking the customers. They want to work with us because of the success of our RE team and the national recognition of our RE team. It also shows that we are capable, we're willing to follow through with projects of an extensive nature like this.
Why don't we, I mean, December 2nd.
I'll take a few minutes to get the package right there.
December 2nd is only a week away. Maybe if we're not called for 20 now, we can save a little bit of schedule for the December 2nd meeting, and whoever, whoever knows.
We are comfortable voting now. Well, I think, I think what you asked for is, can we be able to tell them we're very interested?
That will work for that, yeah.
And I think it's obvious we're very interested. I would just like to see the specific dollar amounts that it's going to cost us.
That's fair enough. And how about, and Mrs. Kramer sent that out to you tomorrow with the specific dollar amount, so you can see everything that's transcribed.
Mark, do you want to show it?
He did it Thursday.
You can't all, December 2nd case.
Nice filter, bio, bio filter, and some other things I don't want anymore.
I'd be happy to done it, give it out. But yeah, Mr. Hurley, if that was the place to tell them we're very interested, then we put it on it. Thanks, dude.
That works for us.
Is that it? Anybody have any objection to that? Other comments or questions for Mr. Curtis? Hearing none, we'll move on to policy. We have first readings on item A through I. Anything you need to discuss?
Only if Mr. Basil does.
Perfect.
Oh, my God. What, mark, mark that down.
The earth's stopped spinning.
Yeah, that's the reporters are on. Any comments or questions regarding policy? Seeing none, is there any old business? Moving on to new business, is there a motion to approve the student boardroom?
I'll second a motion of Mr. Doty.
Motion by Mr. Doty, second by Mr. Dowsky. Comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Basil?
This will be an ad hoc vote for approval unless I hear votes in the commentary. Hearing none, motion passes.
Item 15B, Mrs. Pikes, a Blazer Foundation update.
Thank you, Mr. Cortino. Yes, the Blazer Foundation spent the months of August through October basically reorganizing, reeling from the loss of their post-7 era. They recently did kick off their annual fundraiser, the 25 Days of Christmas. They will be giving away thousands of dollars worth of prizes starting after Thanksgiving, including the Fitbit, Big Sprint TV, and other gadgets. 50% of ticket sales will go back to the respective buildings to support programming. And encourage everyone to get involved with the 25 Days of Christmas.
Anybody have a shot already down there?
Oh, yes, they haven't. They have tapped a new leader, they just haven't made a formal announcement yet, so I wasn't sure. If I'm at liberty to discuss.
So they're not, but they are excited about their new president that will be set up.
She told me she was. If I overstep my authority, I'm not.
I just went clear from Mr. Matt's whether it's this before we announced it or before they did their press release.
Strike that, correct.
They are very excited that it'll be announced as soon as that president.
About the executive director, the new executive.
The new executive director.
That's, that was maybe my question.
Sorry, sorry. This isn't over.
Thank you, Mr. Roth.
I'm wrong in a title on.
I didn't hear what you said.
Other comments or questions for Mr. Pikes? Seeing none, we'll move on to safety drills. Mr. Basil?
I just had a question for the administration. We talked about this, I think it was last month, about what type of emergency preparedness are we doing at the schools, particularly, I'm thinking along the lines of a live fire drill. Not fire as in flames, but fire as in automatic weapons fire. I have a couple of different friends of mine that are police officers in different townships, and they regularly conduct these types of drills at their schools so that if there is a problem in a building, kids know that that's supposed to be just locked, and the teacher's not just supposed to be locked in a room, we actually want them out of the buildings as quickly as possible. So if something's happening over here, we're getting as many students out the other side of the building as possible so that they're safe, as opposed to locking them in a room where a potential threat could just walk down the hallway and, you know, take shots at people. So I don't know to what degree they could do that, who we coordinate that with, what steps the administration's taking to move something like that along, whether it's the state police, it's Burge Borough Police, it's AMI Police, maybe it's all three. But I just, I want to bring that to the board's attention, something that's never come up before in the eight years I've been here, but I think in today's day and age, a public school district doing is probably a prudent thing to do on our end as well.
Yes, that's something we're looking at right now. We just came off of the Limerick half-day drill, where we were sequestered in a room doing different scenarios, and we were told we did flying, we did great, passed with flying colors, did fire drills. Those are things that are mandated by the state that we have to do within a certain amount of time when we open our doors. But we're looking at also evacuation points, shelters, various different scenarios, what's going on? You know, it's a different world, so we just have to be prepared for those things. And you're right, it's all three or four law enforcement agencies in the area. So once the holidays go by, the sheriff, they're all in place, we could work with them. I'm new, they're new, they get on board, the principals, you know, kind of new still at what's happening, but we're looking at evacuation points, how the transportation plays into that, how can they get their drivers in to get to our schools, which is an issue right now? I don't want to say too much, but those are the logistical concerns we have with our standalone schools, especially the middle school and high school. So we're, we are involved in looking into that.
Mr. Basil, I think a very valid point, what's going on in the world. And there's no way of telling where the next foolish terrorist attack's going to be, so I think it's good to be, better to be prepared than not. Comments or questions from Mr. Basil and Mr. Harris? Seeing none, or any presentations by the public, or anything?
Before we move on to the coming, some of you should, something I wanted, do you have any specific questions?
Nope. I filed, drop it in here.
Oh, okay. This, I didn't really speak to anybody about, but I'd like to, we talked a lot about how Andrew served the administration earlier, and eight years is a long time, and all the hours that he's put into it, we talked about it before. I think I'd like to see a more permanent recognition of Mr. Basil, and I remember he campaigned heavily to the administration to come to this building, and I think it would be a testament to his leadership in this room, or called me Andrew G. Basil Public Meeting Room.
Is this a joke?
No, I mean, that would be a very nice, if it's something you'd be going to, I'd be happy to make that motion. I don't know.
We have the Dave Robbins life, right?
Yeah, I don't.
You don't want it?
No, thank you. I'm very touched by the gesture, but, you know, my purpose was to serve my community, not to have my name on things, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
We talked a lot about recognition tonight, the curriculum is crashing.
Yeah, just think of the joy it would bring to certain people walking in here in your name above the door.
I'd be worried it might be in the face.
Cheap shot.
No, that was a cheap shot, that was, there's people in the committee that really.
Yes, we, we know. We've all seen.
We know, we just didn't think you should have brought it up.
I just have a quick question, and I probably should, a moral procedural question, I may have suggested before, but with the reorganization meeting and the fact that the secretary and assistant secretary are both going on the numbers of the board, usually the secretary carries over. Will we appoint on that tonight? Who takes things, who takes care of things until?
I talked to Mr. Supers about it. Technically, both Mr. Basil and Mr. Speed are on the board until December 1st. So.
Correct.
So, and the meeting's December 2nd, that night, the meeting will be run by the board secretary, judging by some emails I've seen with Mr. Supers, Mr. Small is a former board secretary, Mr. Small is bonded, Mr. Small could very well be the acting board secretary that night.
Okay, I just want to be sure.
Yeah, unless somebody else.
When we started out at the reorder meeting, who did that, filled that hole?
I mean, unless someone has an objection to that, I use experienced ability.
And I would like to thank Mr. Basil for taking that responsibility for the last two years, too, because it's a lot of work, and I did certainly a lot, so, thank you. I'd like to throw you a question.
Mr. Curtis, can you ask the public if they have anything to add?
Sure.
Any public presentation on any issue?
Can I just yield last bit of, 18:36, 11:00, 11:08. I just wanted to make sure that thousands of people in the audience knew that the administrators are all at the parent-teacher conferences, and I just think it's awesome, I know it's horrible to say, but that they're not here, because we have all the volatile parents that love to use the excuse that administrators aren't visible. So I actually think it's great that they're all there in the building tonight, also there because the teachers are doing all their 14-hour day today. I know not everybody's a fan of teachers, but they all have, this is their heavy day. So it's nice that they're all supported, and I did a one wish all the board members that have been so big fans to enjoy the holiday season, so.
Thank you. And let me add that we're all fans of teachers, so thank you. Other public comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Second.